All right, the time is now 6:00 PM and I'd like to call the January 24th, 2024 regular meeting of the Hastings School Board to order. First, I would like to ask that the, that Director Milner take attendance. Director Pine. Director Zuzik.
Present.
Vice Chair.
Dresli.
Present.
Chair Tate.
Here.
Director Brunz.
Here.
Director Milner, here. And Director Beermeier.
Here.
Thank you. All right, if I may, ask everyone who is able to please stand and remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, we need a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
Motion to approve the agenda, Zuzik.
Can I get a second?
Second, Dresli.
All right, any discussion? All right, with no discussion, all those in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. Next, we need a motion to approve the January 3rd, 2024 organizational board meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the organizational meeting minutes, Dresli.
Can I get a second?
Second, Brunz.
All right, any discussion? All right, with no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion to approve the January 3rd organizational meeting minutes passes unanimously. Next, I would like to take a moment to recognize the visitors in the room. Appreciate you taking the time to spend with us this evening and appreciate also those watching online and watching in the future. Next on the agenda, we have the Raider Spotlight.
My very favorite part of a board meeting, so we have with us tonight Mr. Doran, Abby Myers, Craig Beisel, and they are going to speak to and introduce our Rotary Students of the Month. So, welcome.
Craig's letting me have the mic, which is abnormal, so. Yeah, right, right. Thank you, everyone, hello, thanks for giving us the time tonight to speak, to honor these, a few of these amazing high school students. I am Abby Myers, joined by Craig Beisel, the president of our Rotary Club here in Hastings. I get the privilege of coordinating our Student of the Month along with Mr. Doran and the high school staff. It is one of the best meetings we have all month long. It is so fun to get to meet these students and hear everything about them. So, tonight, we are here, we do one a month, so there's eight total throughout the school year, and we're here with the first four of them tonight. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with the Rotary Club, we're a local chapter of an international service organization, and our motto is "Service Above Self." So, our group of volunteers focused on giving back to the community and providing support in varying different capacities. So, for this particular program, we have lots of different programs. We've done things, larger projects, like the Rotary Pavilion, we've helped with the Vermillion Falls Bridge, we put on the Rivertown Live Concert, which is Craig's big project throughout the year. But Student of the Month is just a fun way to be able to recognize these students. Mr. Doran and the Hastings High School staff nominate deserving seniors of our Student of the Month Award, and then their committee selects them monthly. They get to join us for breakfast, and they get to give us an elaborate speech on themselves. I always tell them it's brief, not to put them on the spot, so. They get invited with their families, and it's just a really fun way to be able to give them some recognition. The criteria for getting nominated is that they're involved in various school or other service-related groups, they take a leadership role among their peers, they diligently work to ensure success for themselves and others, and they exemplify our Rotary four-way text, which is "Of the things we think, say, or do, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned?" Tonight, we're here to present the first four winners. Ashton Stewart, who was unable to make it tonight, Michaela Schuster, Jolie Pettit, and Larry Williams. These students are involved with school programs, including Link Crew, peer tutors, National Honor Society, youth ambassadors, band, athletics, and many others. Their teachers and staff and parents all glow when they speak about them, and there may be even a few tears of joy and pride from varying different people within that. We're lucky to be able to meet these youth, learn from them, and I'm constantly inspired by what they have accomplished at such a young age. In a world where we're inundated with negativity, these students shine bright and lift up their peers. We can all hope their kindness and servant hearts spread like wildfire amongst everyone they meet. I would like to give each of the students just a brief moment to introduce themselves and then give you a little bit of info on what they're doing next year.
Hi, I'm Michaela Schuster, and next year I plan to major in Mechatronics at Michigan
I'm Jolie, and next year I plan to go to the University of Kentucky and double-major in animal science and equine science and management, and then hopefully go to Texas A&amp;M for vet school.
Hi, I'm Larry Williams. Next year I'm going to St. Olaf to study, what am I studying? Psychology, that's what I'm studying.
I was gonna say Larry hasn't even been presented this award yet. His breakfast was delayed because we had finals, so he is gonna be recognized tomorrow morning. So, it's a little kind of backwards, but best part of the job. I mean, it's a hard thing to narrow down or have a committee decide who's the who. These are the who. You look at these students, the list of accolades, very abbreviated list, we got Spanish Honor Society, the number of outside agencies, the number of jobs that they hold down, the number of sports that they all participate in, it's incredible. So, they put us to shame. Looking back, we were talking before the meeting about like our, yeah, absolutely best part of the job, so these kids are where it's at.
One brief question, what is Mechatronics? Sorry, Michaela.
Yeah, I get this question like every time, so it's mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, and then also like the coding side, all combined into one, so it's like a process engineer, or like a systems engineer, or robotics engineer, so you're just like combining them, usually on like, like, what's it called? Usually like in production, on the production floor.
Industrial manufacturing.
Yeah.
Sort of side, right? Well, that's awesome. Yeah.
How did you know that's what you wanted to do? Inspired you?
I like doing like a wide variety of stuff, so I like, at first I wanted to do software and engineering, but then I went to this camp at Michigan Tech, and it was women in engineering, and one of the like focus areas I did was Mechatronics, so we got to build a robot and then like code it, and I really liked it. So, I also like, in physics, we did like some of the electrical stuff and mechanical stuff, so I knew I liked that. So, I just realized I wanted like a broader job than just like one specific area. Thanks.
I'm gonna pick on Larry one more time, just to update the board a little bit about what's going on, I think it's February 15th. Let us know what you're involved in.
Okay, so the Win Ensemble is playing at the, what is it? MMEA? MMEA, it's like, it's like this really.
Minnesota Music Educators Association. Big deal, Larry, big deal.
It's like this really like, like, it's sort of prestigious, because like it's really like selective in which band actually get to play there, and I think like this year, it's like just us and like Rosemount, and like maybe one other playing there, and we have this like hour-long concert that is free to the public, right?
Uh, good question.
I think it is. Well, you need tickets, but it's free to the public. So, if anybody wants to come and listen to the band play, we have like an hour-long concert, and it's really good stuff to hear.
Awesome.
I have a follow-up for you, Larry. Are you pursuing music yet, St. Olaf?
I think like as a secondary thing, like the main thing is psychology, but I want to make sure that I'm still in like choir and the jazz man and all the stuff, right?
I can't imagine you not.
So, I'm trying to stick to that, but I don't really want it to be like my main thing, because it's kind of like, it's a questionable career to go into.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right, good luck to you. All right, does anybody else have any questions? No? All right. Yeah. How'd you get to Kentucky?
I, well, so my Aunt Marissa has family down there, and then they, her brother was kind of bugging me, like, come check it out, and I like my heart's set on Texas A&amp;M, but they're like 55% acceptance rate, which I did get in, but then after, yeah, it was super exciting. But after seeing Kentucky, and they're one of the only, if not the only college in the US that has a specific equine science and management program, which I want to be working in the large animal, specifically equine side of like veterinarian sciences. So, being able to double-major in that while still pursuing animal science as a whole was kind of the winner, and then also being able to have the option to go somewhere else for vet school, because if I, I know I went to, if I were to go to Texas, I probably would just stay there for all eight, so having like the diversity of college, that kind of won me over.
Very nice.
My goal was to get out of here without saying a word, but both Abby and Mr. Doran looked at me like I should probably say something, so I don't have anything prepared, but yeah, just to echo what Abby said, our Student of the Month is truly the best meeting we have at Rotary, and so awesome to share, or to listen to see what all these awesome kids are doing in this school, and we just sit back and we are floored when we hear some of these stories of all the accomplishments these students are making, so it truly, it truly is awesome. You guys are doing, these kids are doing an awesome job in this district, so we appreciate you giving us time to come here and recognize these students. We'll be back in a couple more months, Abby, to do the next four. So, if you guys are ever interested, we do our meetings the third Thursday of every month at the Second Street Depot, or the Student of the Month is the third Thursday. This month is a little bit off, but you guys are more than welcome to come and join us. If you want to reach out to one of us or Mr. Doran, we'd be happy to have you for breakfast to share in the celebration. So, again, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave you two, it's just the write-off, so you guys can look through too, that has the full accolades.
Excellent, okay, fantastic.
We'll be back in May.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for joining us, and good luck to you guys in your last year here and beyond. All right, next on our agenda, we have a listening session summary. This evening, we had two public speakers. The first public speaker advised that she was a bit concerned about the direction of our board, in that we are giving, getting away from governance, had some concerns about the formation of committees and taking up administrative time, the handbook redraft, and then the Policy 215, which is in our consent agenda. And then this is where I'm really happy to have public speaking added back into the agenda, because I don't have to summarize it, and I don't have to be fearful of what I missed. Does anybody have anything else that I missed that they would like to add? Okay. The second speaker we had tonight did a fantastic overview of the Hastings Reads Program. So, anything else to add to that? All right, moving on, we have the reports and discussions portion of our agenda, and first up, we have a discussion or presentation of the Hastings Middle School football discontinuation possibility.
Hello, I'm Pete McGinnis, the middle school athletic director, and here's Brian Malater, who's possibly gonna be part of a program that we're looking to do. First of all, this is with our middle school football program, something that we've done for many, many years, and I'm making a recommendation that we look into moving our middle school program into a traveling program. Over the last five years, we've been contacted by a number of schools about joining there, because the teams in our conference, seven of the nine have already joined this traveling program. So, the bottom line is that it is extremely difficult to find games. Last year, we had to travel to Rochester, possibly twice, because of, you know, the lack of team supply against. So, in order to give the best experience for our kids, we feel it's time, you know, to make a move to go to traveling. Our middle school athletic program is extremely healthy, we have over 700 kids in this building that get involved in an activity throughout the three seasons that we offer. So, in meeting with Brian Malater from Little Raiders, we sat down with the Cottage Grove Board and found out that in the Metro League there, they have 19 teams that would provide an opportunity for our kids and families to be part of. And I know that, you know, we figured out the financial part, what we put into our program, and we know that's, you know, not something that's, you know, a big part of it, but, you know, it does, you know, take, it's gonna cost, you know, families a little bit more money, you know, to be involved in this, but we feel that we can, you know, possibly make a great experience and improve our program by moving into something like this. So, if you have any questions at all, feel free to ask. Brian Malater here, I'll let you explain, kind of, will you run there?
Okay. So, my name's Brian Malater, and I'm the president of Hastings Little Raiders Youth Football. That's been a program for fifth and sixth grade tackle football in Hastings here for just about 30 years, and I think I've been involved with it for about 20, 20, over 20 years of it. Anyways, it's been a great program, we work with the high school and the middle school, and we've had a good, good connection with them, but right now, we've kind of been talking to Pete and hearing things, troubles about the middle school, just getting games to play, like Pete mentioned, some of the kids just don't have teams to play against. So, it's been kind of, it's been maybe, we're concerned it's gonna turn to a negative experience for the kids, you know, just practicing all the time and not getting to play some games. So, that's why Pete and I, we've talked about it with our program, and is it something we should take over for the program? You know, it's something that we don't, we're not excited to do, as far as we wish it'd stay in the middle school program, we're just concerned that it's inevitable that eventually on the road, it's just not gonna be available, because there's no teams to play against. It seems like everybody in the, a lot of the Woodbury Cottage Grove, Mottameady, all of our conferences and all of our neighboring conferences have already dropped middle school football, and have already went to this program, and there's only a few of us left, and it just seems like everybody's going that direction. So, if, if, if the middle school decides that they want to drop the program, or it just doesn't work for them, we would, we would step up and try to put a program together and keep tackle football going for Hastings.
I was trying to explain this to somebody, and they weren't quite getting it, and I said, well, you know, you get a phone call on, on Monday afternoon, and they tell you that they can't play a game on Tuesday, that you've already hired officials, and still weren't getting it, so I said, you know what, it's like this, everybody had a record player at one time, right? Yep, and, you know, we moved on from there, and, you know, you call somebody up, say, hey, can I borrow that record, and say, ah, no, it has a scratch, it doesn't work anymore. And I just, I kind of feel like we're at a point where, you know, looking at something, going over everything, I believe that providing an opportunity for kids to play flag football here at the middle school would be a better option, a safer option for them, would get more kids involved, so just, you know, giving the kids the opportunity to do that, and, you know, pursuing that chance to go and play traveling football, so.
Thank you. Director Pine?
I would assume we stand to lose kids already with our program, you know, lacking competitive teams in all the surrounding areas, I would expect most, we probably have kids that are already leaving middle school to go play for these other leagues.
We do, we have a few kids that have, yeah, actually, I was contacted yesterday by a parent, said they had played in Rosemount last year, and heard that we're possibly pursuing, you know, going this direction. So, yes, we do, and the problem with games is you might get a team that has seventh and eighth graders, while they don't, we have our, we have two seventh grade and two eighth grade teams, and so then it becomes a mismatch. We're not always getting kids the opportunity to play the full game, you know, and so I just feel like the development would be best to get into a league where we can match up equally with these other communities, so.
Director Zuzik?
First, Brian, to you, one of the good things about public school is that there's resources available and apparatuses available to fund for kids that can't afford it, and there are kids that get scholarships and, and the program's available to them, even if they can't afford it as a family, and so that becomes a financial equity issue. Speak to the capacity of the Hastings Little Raider program to, to help families that can't afford it.
Okay, that's a good question. So, we've, we have that right now for our fifth and sixth grade. I guess if any kid wants to play football, we don't want the financial.
Right.
Issue to be the reason why it doesn't happen. So, we have scholarships right now, we do not advertise it, but every year, we have, you know, two to, two to six kids or families that come to us, and it's a small group we have, you know, half a dozen kids, and say that we, you know, we can't play, or do you have a scholarship, and we, and they get, and they get a free pass to play.
Yeah.
You know, so that's something we do have right now.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and then related to that, Pete, I mean, you've managed that program, and how many families can't afford it, or haven't been able to afford it, year in, year out, and I know that that's a dart throw, but what would you say?
I would say like three families.
Three, four families, oh yeah, okay, three families, good, excellent, sounds like we've got the capacity to manage that, then. My second follow-up question would be, Pete, you don't have a crystal ball in front of you, but what's the next sport that we might be entertaining a similar thought about?
We've talked a little, excuse me, a little bit about baseball and softball.
Okay.
About providing a wiffle ball program where we could use, you know, right now, it's just seventh and eighth grade for baseball and softball.
Yeah.
And a lot of the eighth grade girls already move up to the high school to play ninth and 10th grade softball.
Yeah.
So, we struggle with those numbers, and also within our conference, that is something, you know, and you know how busy it is with traveling and how many teams play on the weekends, so that's something that we'll have to look at. But I'll tell you, the other sports, our numbers in track and field and cross-country, soccer are really starting to grow, so that's encouraging.
Well, thank you both for your time and your comments. Brian, been involved with you when I was in business and stuff, you guys run a great program, that Little Raiders program is phenomenal. Pete, I know you're passionate about this, and the coaching, what does the coaching staffs look like? Is it going to be staffs from, that are currently working at the school level, or are they gonna be from the club aspect of it?
You know, we started to talk about that, we met with Dana Strain, the high school football coach, and we talked about, you know, different parents involved, that's the nice thing, you know, where if the fifth and sixth grade, those parents that are coaching, a lot of them have interest to move on, so then we can kind of start that and keep them in the same program, so that's kind of what we would certainly talk about.
Director Brunz?
Yeah, this is for you, Brian. It's kind of an access piece as well, I'm wondering about your practice and accessibility to that, so the schoolhouse is great, because the day is over, we roll right into extracurriculars, kids are already here. What does the practice structure for Little Raiders look like? Is it something where kids go home and then need to get to a separate facility, things like that?
Sure, and I think that's, that's a negative to having this, traveling is not having it right after school, and, you know, but it is later, so typically, and, because a lot of times our coaches are maybe, are parents, and they have jobs as well, so they have to get back and things like that. So, typically, we would be starting a practice when like a six to, six to eight, or maybe 5:30 to 7:30, depending, because it gets darker that time of the year, you know, so it depends, later in the season, it'll be a little earlier, so, you know, it's usually to start about six o'clock, and then they run an hour and a half to two-hour practice. And they'll run a practice from Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, so we'll have practices three days a week, take Wednesdays off, a lot of times there's faith formation or religion classes that are going on during that time, and then, and then Fridays, you know, high school football games, and there's just a lot of, a lot of families just don't, can't do things Friday evenings. So, it'd probably be a program that would have three days during the week, one of those days could be a game, but now the games would probably be on a Saturday or Sunday, depending on the year and the class, so it'd probably be, so you could have a weekend situation, which is adding something different than high school, and, and, but three days a week, so four days, four days a week total, with three weekdays and probably a weekend.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Then about how many games a season would they have access to? Right now, it was what, four last?
Four, yeah. We're guessing, it's somewhere, for Little Raiders, we do 12 games a season, I guess this league is probably more of that eight to 10 games a season, you know? And it depends how long you want the season, there's options, I have a shorter or longer, but I'd say the eight to 10 games for the kids. And, and there's a lot of teams that are involved with it, so travel is a big thing. Cottage Grove guys do all the scheduling for the entire league, from fourth through eighth grade, and so they do a, and we're not in during fifth and sixth, but they're, they try to, they try to put you teams that are closer, so we'd be playing Cottage Grove, and we'd be playing Woodbury, and, and teams that are local, so we're not going north as far.
You know, Matt, I want to back up there, you asked that question about, you know, practice times. Ever since I had to do bus duty, I'm out there and I see kids get on the bus, and they say, hey, welcome, you're not out for a sport. And I say, well, I can't, because I don't have a ride home. Years ago, we used to have an activity bus, and, you know, we don't have that, so I think, you know, as much on the other side of it, with kids getting the opportunity to come back at night, might be easier for them, too.
I appreciate that, Pete, thank you.
I am wondering, you said that there's a cost difference to families, and I'm wondering if it's, if it's kind of an apples-to-apples cost, or like with the, with the school, right? I assume there's busing that's included in the costs that you're paying for. With the traveling, is this a responsibility where parents have to get them to and from the games with their own private vehicles and all of that as well? So, I'm just kind of wondering about cost and kind of the, the structure of what's included in the different costs and what's not.
Right. So, with the middle school football, the fee went up to $120 for seventh and eighth grade, and, you know, with them playing four to five to six games is kind of where that was at, and then when we met with the Cottage Grove Board, they, they talked about something in the neighborhood of $250, you know, which pays for the, the officials. Yes, they do get a ride, or do transport, the parents transport the kids, so I'm guessing, is that what you would agree with?
Yeah, I'd say we're probably gonna be in that range, we're gonna try, we still have fundraising programs, so we try to keep our programs as cheap as we can, in the fifth and sixth grade, it's very inexpensive, but it, it seems like it's that $250 to, to, you know, some are more expensive than that, depending what they do, but it's probably gonna be around that, that range.
Right. One of the other things, obviously, is equipment, and I, yes, it's, the football helmets are extremely expensive, and so I had our sports rep come in and recondition the helmets and go through and tell me what needs to be put away. We've tried each year to stay on top of it, which we have, we went through, the other day- which we have. We went through the other day and we have 132 helmets downstairs. And so, but they have a shelf life of 10 years. And so we have a, a good majority under the five-year mark. You know, obviously in some seven, eight, nine, and 10, you know, part where they're gonna, we're gonna have to get rid of. So that, that's going to play another big part of it too, is what, how do we handle the equipment? Will Short, the AD up at Simley, told me the other day, he says, two years ago when they moved to traveling, he said they donated all their equipment to the kids and they just, it set their program off. Obviously, it cut the cost for them to get started so they could get their feet on the ground with the fundraising. So.
Yep. And that's, that's, that'll be our challenge too, how we're going to do the equipment if we take this over. And that's one of the things I mentioned, Pete, we need to know, you know, by the middle of February, whether something wants to try to do this year because we have, or do because we have to get organized on this. But the cost of the equipment is a big situation, a big issue for us. We, we, we right now keep about two years reserve for our program for fifth and sixth grade. We're not thinking about seventh and eighth at this point. So it's something we can, we can handle the maintenance of it and the management of it. But the initial cost is something that we're going to have to try to work, work together on if we can. So.
Okay. I do have another question. So obviously if parents have to get their kids to and from, this is a traveling league, what does traveling mean? How far are you talking about parents having to get their kids to games?
Well, practices will probably be at the, the middle school. So they'll have to travel to the middle school for these kids. The games were, it's a Metro East, Metro Southeast Metro Youth League. I don't know if I got everything correct. So, um, so it's, it's, it's kind of, you're, you're looking at like a place like Cottage Grove, Woodbury, Simley, Mata Medei.
East Ridge.
East Ridge. You know, it's kind of, kind of the, probably looking like our conference area and that kind of area. So not, games might be at Todd Field. They might be at a field here, the home games. It's probably going to be about 50, half and half. Because half the games will be home, so that travel will be minimal. And half the games will be traveling someplace else, hopefully in the, will be for sure in the southeast metro. You know, it's just a matter of what school in the southeast metro.
Okay. And just to be clear, you had said earlier, probably eight to 10 games per season. So you're talking four or five games that parents would have to travel somewhere else. Okay. Director Pine?
Okay, last question. So right now, you said a lot of the kids had limited playing time because there's only four games. You had a lot of kids out. So going to a traveling program, would it give the kids more opportunity to have more playing time? Because we'd be able to field more, like would we have two eighth grade teams, two seventh grade teams to be able to play? And then they'd be kind of competing against their level if you have like A and B, if you do it based on kind of a tryout?
Correct. Yeah, we, we would look at doing two teams per level, you know, with the numbers that we have this past year. That's what, exactly what we would have done. And we can kind of gauge that with what Little Raiders has. And Little Raiders had well over 120 fifth and sixth graders. So, yes, you know, to provide kids an opportunity to play, it's more important to keep the kids out and, you know, allow them to have fun and learn the game. So yes, absolutely.
All right. Other questions?
Can you speak to your preferred timelines and the time sensitivity of a decision for the board? And then as a follow-up, what would the flag football program look like?
Sure.
Thanks.
We, when we met with Cottage Grove, they had asked by February 15th if we would, you know, be able to provide an answer to them to join because they'll obviously start scheduling games and putting, you know, things together. That would, you know, hopefully that's in the timeline. I know we've been looking at for quite a while here and talking to everybody that we need to talk to. The other part with the flag football would be something right after school. We almost looked at it, you know, if we couldn't run it through here, I would work with community ed. You know, right now we've got the ski program. We've got kids signed up for that. We have 25 kids signed up for a badminton club that's going to start here in a couple of weeks. So whatever way we can run it, I would love to do it right after school from, you know, the 2:45 to 3 o'clock to, you know, like a 4, 4:15, to allow the kids to do that. So that's kind of.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So one thing, have you, have you collected family input on this decision yet?
I haven't talked to all the families, but I have probably been in contact with 10 to 15 families. And it's, I mean, it's an all-go thing is what they would like to. And clearly, I know that some people, you know, you know, that would, would rather stay with middle school. But we, we really, as a, as a football program, with our boosters and with our coaches, we've, we've talked about what's best for our kids. I know if, you know, we are playing some of these teams and we're up 40 to nothing, then some of the kids aren't going to play in the second half, you know? And, you know, so how are we getting better? How are we to compete with, you know, some of these other schools?
So I would like to make a proposal. I, I guess I'd like to ask. So we have a working session scheduled for February 13th. And we can add a special section, session to have a vote on this particular topic because I'm not tremendously comfortable with, with having this presented and voting on the same night without having constituents able to give us feedback on this. I mean, it's an important topic, right? So I'm wondering, would it be possible to gather more family feedback between now and February 13th and provide it to the board at that time? So we can have just more information for those who are impacted directly?
Yes. And I, I think that was kind of a soft timeline, February 15th. That wasn't the end. But I mean, that's to get the ball rolling.
Okay.
They want to make.
It's definitely, I mean, it's workable for us, right? It gives us a few, two and a half week, three weeks, three weeks almost.
So I'll put together a survey and can send out to the families.
Okay. That'd be perfect. All right.
Or the regular sessions, the 21st, if that's.
Or the, oh, yeah, we do have it earlier, right? It's not the fourth week. Or February 21st is our regular board meeting. So if that would be acceptable. So, okay.
Yes.
You think so? Yes?
We'll do that. Yes.
Okay. February 21st, we'll add it to the agenda for that night then.
Make a decision then.
Perfect. All right. If there's nothing else, thank you, gentlemen, for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right. The next thing on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
All right. I will make this brief. So just a couple of things are notable that I thought you should be aware of. So first off, we're super excited. Just yesterday, we were awarded a grant for MTSS in the amount of 254,000. And so we're excited about this. This is the second one that we've received this fall. And then just a reminder, tomorrow, we have our legislative breakfast for Dakota County. You have in front of you, we'll have a local platform next month at the February meeting. Tomorrow though, those are shared interests of all of Dakota County schools. And so those are the topics. You might notice that one, our SROs, that was removed just to, there was a little confusion on that. And that has now been identified as being the first bill that will be brought forward. So we believe that there's going to be resolution to that. So that's why that's not included there. And just a note that the Tour of Gratitude has started. And just a fun reminder of all the things that are going on in the district. And we've got a lot of moving parts that sometimes is just a reminder to me of all the things that are going on. So that's off and running. And really excited to meet with all of our organizations. Any questions?
All right. Next up is the cadence review.
Okay, with the cadence review, we do not have a leadership update tonight. So I will take this opportunity then to talk a little bit about what you're seeing and how it's compiled. And so at the beginning of the school year, each of our leadership staff members takes a look at the three aims of the district. So in this case, we have engaged learners, effective operations, communication and collaboration. And they establish a SMART goal, at least one. They can do a maximum of two under every area. And then after their goals, sometimes we walk through them. What do you need for support? What does that look like? What will success look like? And so they establish those goals. And then prior to this meeting, they are all given a feedback with an email that comes automatically to them. And they're asked to numerically reflect on their progress on each of their goals and then also add a narrative. So then I review all of those. And what you see is the comprehensive, how they all come together. So as you can see collectively, you always like to see the upward swing, right? That's our trend line. Sometimes you'll see there's a little pause and it's, it's dependent. Sometimes it's by the end of the year, my goal is that I will have met with 100% of the teachers in some capacity, whatever that looks like. And so oftentimes, you're not going to see a 10 until the end of the year. But that's what you're seeing in front of you. And then typically, at each board meeting, you'll, we'll have at least one leadership staff member speak to exactly what their, their goal is and why they chose it. Any questions about what cadence of Raider responsibility means?
Thank you. All right. The next thing is that's on our agenda is the leadership goal updates. And we do not have. We don't have that. Sorry. You mentioned that. It's okay. All right. Next, sorry, is the REED Act update from.
All right. So just recently, the REED Act, we have been waiting for the curriculums to be published as far as the approved curriculums from the state. And so there are five approved. One is a comprehensive curriculum. Three are foundational. And then there's wit and wisdom that is missing the foundational piece. And so in a very quick turn, we have on February 5th, which is a staff development day, we have in the morning, I can't remember which is which, but we have both the options that we're looking at scheduled for that day. So all, all of our elementary teachers will hear for 90 minutes about wit and wisdom. And then they'll also get a presentation for open up. And there's reflection times scheduled after that. So our goal is after that day to have a really good indication of the direction that we're going for the REED Act. So really wanting to be as progressive as we can at this point. Any questions about that?
All right. Next on the agenda is board member onboarding. Are you doing this?
I'm almost done talking. Yeah. All right. So in front of you, you have just a brief packet that has just a number of things that hopefully are helpful to you. Scheduling that one-to-one session, if you haven't done that, completing the phase one, phase two training, officer training, if that's applicable. Just a reminder of some of those things that are coming up. And then an area that hopefully is helpful information to you. And then in this Sunday's weekly wrap, there will be a quick survey to just hopefully allow us to customize what you're looking for some help with and just what will be helpful and what your time opportunities are too. So look for that on Sunday. And if there's anything missing here, certainly let me know.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a building construction fund update from Ms. Hubert.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Just a quick reminder that the building construction fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds. And the money can be used for school renovations and improvements. So we currently have a little over 200,000 unallocated. And that is intentional. So as projects continue to close, some come in under budget, some come in slightly over budget. And right now, we are holding that unallocated balance to cover some of the remaining projects. As we look at the projects that are in process, there are still a fair number of them, but the majority of them are very close to closeout. And we are just working through that process of getting the paperwork that we need and all the manuals and everything to go with those projects. So we will continue to see that the in-process ones close out. We have two projects that are in design. There's a Bollards project that's planned for spring. And then we still have the nature preserve that we're just kind of working through the plan for that. So the balance in the bond account is currently at $3.2 million. And then there will be a more detailed review of the bond account at the February work session. And at that point, we'll talk through the status of all the projects and kind of where they're at and what's coming up. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is a Data Practices Act report. This is a new thing in our agenda. There were a couple of concerns that came up in this past month with a couple, one or two, I can't remember, Data Practices Act requests that ultimately cost several thousand taxpayer dollars. So just to highlight this as how much time our administrators are spending on these requests and how much money taxpayers are spending on it, just going to add the number and amount of money spent on these. So is this Ms. Moon or?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening. On the data request this month, the bills payable, legal fees that were included for this month that were related to data requests, the total amount was $4,597. And my thought was, I would just give you an update on how many requests we had from the prior month and the status of those requests. So since the December of '23 board meeting, we've had three data requests. Two of those requests have been responded to and closed. And we have one that was received and is open.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the, sorry, any questions? Yes, Director Susan?
Is it our intention to hear a same or similar report each month?
Yes.
Good. Excellent. I wonder, and it seems counter the, the intent of this report because it would require getting more data. But I wonder if there's some sense of getting like the past 12 months or the past, you know, what's a historical record? And so that we can see it as a trend instead of seeing it as a month?
Yeah, I guess that was my intent with the request to start here as our baseline. So that we have somewhere to start from. And then going forward, yes, we'll be able to identify trends. And, and I know that the comment had been made that we've seen many more data requests in recent years. But I guess I would, I would leave it up to you guys if you want to, if it's easy to, to get this data available or not, I'll leave it up to you. Otherwise, my intent was let's just start here for baseline and move forward. So.
Chair Tate, I do have a little bit of historical that I brought with, just in case.
Well, fantastic.
So I started tracking data requests on, in March of 2021. Since March 11th of 2021, we have had 110 data requests.
Thank you. Yes.
Hey, Kate, to put you on the spot, but do you have a dollar amount that has accumulated with those 110 requests? You're like a ballpark?
No, we have not tracked those along the way.
Okay.
So the question, because you don't have a mic.
Yeah.
The question was, is there a dollar amount that you're aware of? So no, not at this time. So this is our baseline, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Just one other quick question. So with the data requests, they all go to the law firm at that like roughly $265 per hour rate?
Correct. So what the process that happens is they come in to me, I set up the data search criteria. They go through, depending upon the request, it'll go to a tech and we'll pull the emails from district emails. Sometimes board members will get an email that says, I request for this data. Please go through your information and send me any data that you have responsive. All of that data is gathered. And then it goes to legal for review for redaction and private data review and attorney-client privilege information is removed, those kinds of things, student data.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. For real, moving on now. The 2024 school board meeting calendar in full disclosure. So we had looked at the 9/17 board meetings, the historic ones. And it looked like the vast majority of their meetings were on the first, the first Tuesdays of the month with a few second Tuesdays. And, and so we thought we would be okay with going with the second Tuesdays, but we had some conflicts. So we have regrouped, we regrouped in the working session. And so we had to make a few alterations to the calendar. And they are, the May 7th working session is being moved to May 9th. The July, we have multiple conflicts in the month of July. So the proposal is eliminating the working session and only having one regular board meeting. And that is moving from July 24th to the 31st. The third change is moving the August 6th, 6th, sorry, working session to August 7th. The fourth change is moving the November 12th. The fourth change is moving the November 12th working session to November 7th. And then we have December 3rd working session going to December 5th. And then the other thing is that we added in the Monday, January 6th, 2025 organizational meeting into the calendar, just to have that on there. So the plan is for us to, this is an action item later tonight for us to vote on, so if anybody has any concerns right now, you can certainly bring them up. Otherwise, this is the proposal that we'll be voting on. Sounds good? All right, that's that. Next, we have the Policy Committee summary from Vice Chair Dresley.
So in January, we met on the 19th. It was after the working session where we were provided feedback on the 16 policies that were on our schedule for tonight for second and third reading. I'll kind of touch point on the ones that there was feedback provided on. We reviewed 16 policy requests, revised three procedures related to public comments, time, place, and manner. These changes were adopted during the organizational meeting, so I'm not going to go through all of the changes because they were already approved by us when we voted on them in the first place, but they are on our summary here. Policy 215.1 PR, addressing school board member violations procedure. With the new language in Policy 215, legal will be involved immediately, and their decision would be followed. Since this procedure was never adopted, it is no longer under consideration by the Policy Committee. And lastly, 620 Credit for Learning will not be on the agenda tonight for third reading because we wanted to get some feedback about some of the requests and recommendations that we got during the policy, during the working session.
All right. And then we will move into our policies for first reading, starting with 206.
Policy 206 is updated to reflect the changes that were adopted during our organizational meeting in January. I'll just briefly go through here. Section 2A, we removed prior to start of the regular school board meeting. Section 3A, we replaced definitions to match MSBA model policy. Section 4, we removed completely. Section, I'm sorry, section 6, that's not right. Okay. Well, it is section. Section 6, we removed completely, and then we replaced the district representative with administrative assistant to the superintendent. Section 6D, we also removed, and we removed public hearing because we already have a public hearing policy. The procedure was taken out of section 9. The reason for all of these removals is because we had these already in procedure, so it didn't make sense to keep them in the policy as well. The policy should stay the same, a procedure is more fluid, so they're already in the procedure, and that's where they'll be housed.
Any questions or?
Have we heard back from legal on their perspective about 206? I think that we were awaiting feedback from both them and HCTV.
HCTV, we have, and so their comment was to ask to stop it immediately, and the others we have not from legal.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
It has been requested, though. That's not.
Yeah, I think. Appreciate that.
Okay, so I guess the question is the plan for, without legal input, we will proceed down this road until we hear negative feedback from them. Right? I think that's fair. That was kind of what we said, unless we got negative feedback. So we'll continue down this path until we hear back from them, and if anything is negative, we will accommodate as necessary, right? Okay, go ahead.
Just a procedural question then. Are we moving forward to fast-track this policy, or are we holding back until we go through three readings?
So especially for new board members, rate our practices to have three readings in public meetings before we were to, would be, before we would be able to adopt a policy. And the discussion that we had during the Policy Committee meeting was that we could recommend that this be fast-tracked, meaning tonight is the first reading. We could add a special session to be attached to our working session on February 13th for the second reading, and then have the third reading and adoption at the February 21st meeting. So I guess that's the proposal on the table, if we would like to fast-track this. Otherwise, normal cadence would be first reading tonight, second reading February 21st, third and final reading hopefully for adoption, March 27th. So looking for feedback. Director Zuzik?
Thank you. It seems to me that until we hear back from legal, I'm, I'll just say that I'm uncomfortable moving forward with it until we hear back. And so if that means that it happens, and there's some other reason to have a special session on that date, like I wouldn't propose that we have a special session just for this one policy, but until or unless we hear back from legal, I'm uncomfortable moving forward with it. And I would, which means it's kind of the first of three hearings probably.
And I'll just, I'd like to respond with my perspective on that because until we adopt, right, the current practice and procedure stands. So, right, so my thought is we can move through this. I would certainly assume we would hear back from legal by February 21st if we, you know, to be able to adopt that night. So the hang-up, of course, is if we don't fast-track it, then we're not going to be able to start with public comment in the meeting until the April meeting, right? So that's really it, right? If we fast-track it, we can have that happen in March. If we don't fast-track it, we have it happen in April. So just my two cents. I can go either way on this. So Director Brunz?
Yeah, I would just speak to doing our due diligence with legal and wait that out. I don't think we have any need to rush it.
Any other feedback? Okay, so we will not fast-track. We will stick with the February 21st and March 27th meetings for the second and third readings on this one. Okay. Okay, we have student bios that are floating out here that are in color. Or, we're good, okay. Okay, all right, we're good. Don't worry. Okay, second reading is, Policy 301 is our first policy, our first second reading.
And I'm not going to go into in detail any of the ones that didn't have questions from the, from the working session on the 10th. So we'll move right on down to 303 Superintendent Selection. The request or for consideration was to keep Sections 3 and 4, and the committee is agreeing to keep those in line with MSBA model policy. And the same request was made for 304 Superintendent Contract Duties and Evaluation was to keep Section 2. We're going to go ahead and stick with that recommendation and keep the MSBA model policy aligned with our, with the policy that we're proposing. Policy 306 Administrative Code of Ethics, the request was to add definitions for administrator and add compliance, and a compliance section. The committee recommends to add to Section 1 the wording as defined in Minnesota Rule 3512.0100, subpart 5 through 7, because that actually defines what the administrators are as far as what the, who's accountable to follow the Code of Ethics for administrators. And the committee is also recommending to add Section 2, or Section 3 Compliance, and A. Compliance to this policy is governed by Minnesota Statute 214.10 Complaints, Investigations, and Hearings. So we're just putting the statutory language in the policy. Are there any questions? Okay. And we'll keep moving right along here to 408 Subpoena of a School District Employee. There was a request to add into Sections 3A 1 and 2, OR Guardian. And even though this language comes directly out of stat, or state law and federal law, after looking into it, I seen that parent is defined as parent, including guardian. Including guardian was one of the, parents of a student include natural parent, a guardian, or an individual acting as a parent in the absence of a parent or a guardian. So because both of those laws have actual definitions within them, and we don't have those definitions within ours, I think it's totally perfect for us to put OR Guardian in there. So that's the recommendation from the Policy Committee. Any questions? We're going to keep chugging along then here. 410 Family Medical Leave, there was a request to redefine spouse in Section 3I. There was also a suggestion to strike would-be incapable of self-care in Section 3G8. And there was also a recommendation to reconsider the term semester in Section BC, or I'm sorry, in Section 5C. All of these come out of, this language comes out of Minnesota statute and law. The language in this policy reflects the requirements of Family Medical Leave Act, and is consistent with the requirements of the Minnesota Parenting Leave Act, and you, so we're suggesting that we stay with that language. And we're also suggesting that there be annual review per Section 7B. Because it states in the policy, this policy shall be reviewed annually.
Is that four policies now that we're reviewing out annually?
Yeah.
I think it's four.
Yep. Well, it will be five after. So we'll move right on unless anybody's got any questions about 414, which is mandated reporting of child neglect and/or physical or sexual abuse. The recommendation was to update Section 3F to match what MSBA model policy says, and the committee recommends doing so. The committee also recommends adding to Section 5A maltreatment. And Section 7C states that we will review this policy annually, so the committee is recommending reviewing this policy annually. Okay, we'll move right on to third readings then.
Hold on. Oh, yep. Okay. Actually, Joe, just kidding. We're moving on to action items, which include the third readings.
And I just wanted.
Do you want to talk to?
I just want to touch base on, because there's a request forum.
Okay, so let's, okay, just hold. Hold on one second. Yes. Okay, I just want to make sure, does anyone have any questions, comments on all of the policies under second reading? We went through those pretty quickly, but we're good? Okay. Okay, so next is the, the action items. So I'll say, let's do a first and second to approve the consent agenda, and then when we have discussion, let's do the policy summary if that works. Yeah? Okay.
Do we, you need to pull it all to the consent agenda then to process?
I don't think so. We can leave it in consent, right? Yeah, we'll just add the comments before we vote. Okay. So can I get a first and second to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, understanding that we'll have a report and possible discussion on these topics.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that.
Sounds good. Second?
I'll second.
All right, second, Jeremiah. All right, any discussion? Go ahead.
I just want to give a review of what, because I wasn't at the January 10th working session, so I want to follow up on the comments that were made on these policies before we just fly through them. So 215, there was a request to remove subjective language. Obviously, everybody's had a chance to read that policy, that the new version of that policy, so the subjective language has been removed. That's the Policy Committee's recommendation. Any questions? Okay, then we're going to move right along to 416, there was, which is drug, alcohol, and cannabis testing. There was a request to delete all references to charter. The committee completed that, so that's the recommendation is to move forward with the policy with all the word charter in it. And any questions? Okay, 601, which is school district curriculum and instructional goals. There was a request to add language to Section 3 that statute requires these definitions. The Policy Committee recommends moving forward with those definitions with that language added from statute.
All right, any questions or concerns on the policy piece? All right, if none, is there any other discussion on any other topic within the consent agenda? With no other discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, consent agenda passes unanimously. And the next thing on the list is the individual items up for action. The first item up for action is the bills payable. And just to be clear, Director Brunz will be abstaining from this vote as he is a 9/17 employee, and we have a sizable payment within this bills payable. So can I get a first and second for approval for the bills payable?
Zuzik, I recommend we pay the bills.
I second that, Dresley.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed and abstaining?
Abstained.
Okay. So let the record show that the bills payable has passed 6-0 with the nays and one abstention. All right, next up is the Solar for Schools Grant approval, and I believe Superintendent Champa is going to give us a little information on this first.
I am. So just from your presentation last, at our last session, which was your work session, just a couple of things to follow up on. Just first, clarity on a vote on this tonight is just to move forward with the application. It's not the project itself, it's the application. So just to highlight a couple of things and just a thank you to Cam and Jen as they've been working on this diligently. So first and foremost, the Solar for the Schools Grant provides funds up to $675,000. I know that was reviewed, and that can be multiple projects as long as they fit within that guideline of 675. The district is currently weighing several factors, and this last time, really, all of the considerations were roof-mounted. So we also have now included ground mount as that, to be a consideration, even though some of the costs, upfront costs are more for that. And then the savings to the district, regardless of what that mount would be, would be $80,000 the first year with approximately $7 million over the course of the lifespan, which is intended to be 40 years. And so next steps, if approved, if you end up moving forward with the project, construction would start summer of '24, so the summer, with it being completed in the fall. And so most critical is the timeline of the application for the grant is due February 7th, and then the full grant is due June 7th. Additional questions you have?
No? All right, if there's no other questions, could I please get a first, or a motion and a second for approval of moving forward with the Solar for Schools Grant application?
Motion to approve.
All right, second?
I'll, Jeremiah, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, the motion to move forward with the Solar for Schools Grant application passes unanimously. And next, we have the donations to approve. And if I could have Director Milner begin with that motion.
I, Melissa Milner, introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district, whereas Minnesota Statute Section 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor only by the adoption of a resolution approved by 2/3 of its members and. by two-thirds of its members, and whereas the referenced donations in the District 200 Donations Report from October 2023 to December 2023 have been generously donated.
So first, we need a second.
So we need a second on the donations, accepting the donations.
I second.
Director Dresley?
So Director Dresley duly seconded the motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution. And then I do a roll call vote. Okay, so I need to do a roll call vote. So Director Pine?
Yes.
Pine. Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dresley?
Yes.
Chair Tate?
Yes.
Director Brunz?
Yes.
Director Milner, yes. And Director Beer Meyer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And I just have to thank this community for their generous donations. This is $166,500 that was donated in, you know, October through December of 2023. So that's absolutely phenomenal. Thank you for your support, community members. All right, next or afterwards?
Do I read that last sentence?
Oh, go, sure.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Hastings Public School District School Board to gratefully accept these gifts.
Perfect. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the Hastings Middle School Football Discontinuation Action. I would like to request a motion to postpone this vote until our February 21st regular meeting.
Does a postponement require a second? And if so, I'd second that.
Yeah, so I'm looking for a motion first.
Pardon me?
And then you're all good.
Make the motion to postpone it.
Okay, second, Dresley. All right, motion, Zuzik, second, Dresley. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, the motion to postpone the Hastings Middle School Football Discontinuation Action is unanimously approved. The next item on our agenda is the is the assignment of a relicensor committee board member. So I believe Superintendent Champa has a little information for us on this.
Sure. According to the rules in this, a the board has the right to assign a community member. And it specifically states in the rule that the that you are not considered to be an employee, therefore, it can be a board member.
Okay, so I am looking for interest before we take a motion. Is there interest in a board member being on this committee? Yes.
Can you tell me what this committee entails being on this?
Sure, so this is all of our teachers are required to have continuing credits and hours. And so to be able to renew their license, they have to not only have the minimum number of hours, but there's a number of categorical requirements, whether that's mental health or what that looks like. So it's approving all the hours. And today, that looks a little different than it used to. So it used to be a large pile of papers and going through and counting all of that. Today, it's mainly electronic. So it's a, I would say, low level commitment.
Thank you very much. So there's no meetings connected with it?
There would be.
If there, very few.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a question for clarity, it could be a community member outside of a board member.
That is correct.
So I guess that's our first step. Historically, we've had a board member assigned to this committee. We can have a committee or a community member assigned to this if we'd like to. The only legal stipulation is that the person cannot be an employee of the district. So so I guess, yes, Director Pine?
Do we have any community members have who have expressed interest to fulfill this role?
I have not heard that.
I'll do it if nobody else does.
Okay, so Director Zuzik has experience and is interested if no one else wants to.
Well said.
Okay. So is there any other interest at the board table? If not, I will take a first and second.
Change nomination or design?
Well, a motion to to.
I nominate myself.
I motion, I second that motion.
Okay.
Third.
Third. Okay, that sounds good. Fourth. All right, any discussion? Okay, if none, all those in favor of appointing Director Zuzik to the relicensor committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Okay, so next item is voting on the revised 2024 school board calendar, as was discussed earlier. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick note that August 6th, and the date's at a glance, that should be August 7th. So just to make that modification.
Oh, yeah.
Good catch. Okay.
So you don't have to do.
Yes, thank you. We don't want to do it again. So I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the calendar as presented.
With the.
Mm-hmm. With the, yeah, with the with the modifications that I advised of earlier and the dates at a glance updated from August 6th to August 7th.
So moved, Dresley.
Second, Beer Meyer.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion to pass the revised 2024 school board calendar passes unanimously. And the. The next item on the agenda is the board meeting inclement weather plan. So we unfortunately didn't get to this as an action item at the organizational meeting as we had intended. So the plan is that in the event that a scheduled school board meeting is canceled due to severe weather, it will automatically be rescheduled for 24 hours later unless a quorum of the board is not available. So the plan is to, this would be included in the posting of our meetings so that automatically we can just move it instead of having to wait the three days for proper open meeting law posting requirements and all that kind of stuff. So could I get a motion and a second to approve this inclement weather plan?
So moved, Dresley.
Second, Milner.
All right, any discussion? Yes.
Just clarity that this will be added to the handbook as requested during the working session.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion to pass the inclement weather plan passes unanimously. And lastly, we have the future meetings. And if you look in Board Book, you will see that we have all kinds of meetings posted now. Some will need to be reposted, I believe, to be updated with the calendar we just voted on. But coming up here, we have. Coming up, we have, sorry, I got to switch my screen. As mentioned, we have our working session on February 13th, and in that, we are going to be getting a student behavior report. We're going to get an overview of the building, construction, projects, and funds report. We're going to get a finance 101 presentation for new and old board members to get an understanding on that. We will be talking about the handbook updates, proposed updates, and we will be walking through the updated procedures and form that came through with ultimately the changes that we have in our 200 series policies. And then we have our strengths building session on the 14th as a board, and that is not open to the public. That is a team building event or activity for board members. And then we have our February 21st regular meeting. We have the, we're going to be approving the 24, 25, and 26 or 25, 26 school calendars. We will be talking about reviewing the building and grounds, and we'll be looking for a recommendation for a structure of the department. We will also be discussing our legislative platform, and we will also have, of course, the middle school vote on the football program. So that's what we have coming up in the next month with board business. And that is that. And then I am looking for, I'm sorry?
Can we just talk about what might work for this?
Oh, sure.
Reading for the strengths work?
Yes, so this is a question as far as what we want to do for our strengths work in April for the board. So we can either have basically take up a couple of hours on our four, nine, our April 9th working session for our strengths work, and then find additional time in April for the other two hours. Or we could essentially take up the entire working session time on the 9th, which the estimate is about four and a half hours of work to be done that's left. It'll go fast. It did go fast the first time, I have to say. Or we could find another date in April for those four and a half hours. I believe the only thing, and I just want to look at this. So the intent going forward is to discuss any policies that we have coming up for readings in the regular meeting. We want to make sure we hit on them at the working sessions so that we give input at those meetings. So the only other thing that we will absolutely need to do at the April working session would be reviewing student school board member recommendations from that committee. So we could certainly try to do all of this in one night, meaning the student school board member work along with the four and a half, right, four and a half hours, four and a half hours of strengths, strengths work. So I think it's up to the board if we want to try to knock it out in one night. We can move everything else that we had planned on that night to a different working session that works. So you want to do, go that way?
Yes.
Just do the four and a half hours plus a student school board member proposal? All right, so that is our plan for April 9th then. Okay. All right, any other comments on scheduling or meeting? Yes.
Are we getting rid of the March 6th meeting then? Is that crossed off the calendar? Is that, are we keeping that?
So I think we're doing, right, that was the one that was the questionable one?
Everything else stayed the same.
Okay, because that was the one that we had said was questionable for March 6th. We're doing the one-on-ones instead for March 6th? Or it's too determined?
No, March 6th is gone.
Okay, okay.
This will replace that.
Okay, fantastic. All right, any other questions on schedule? Yes. Okay, we will get an invite for the four and a half hours. All right, yes.
Additionally, Ms. Ledwig, there's some that we have invites for that are no longer occurring. So if you can work to go back in and cancel some of those, that'd be great. Thanks.
Any other comments? Good? All right, if nothing further, I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. So moved, Dresley.
Second, anyone?
Second, Milner.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned at 7:21 PM.